Okay, let's call this to order. If everyone will please rise for this pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for coming. Let's start out with the last month's financial report, Rich, when you're ready.
Well, we're about two-thirds of the way through the fiscal year. We've got about seventy-four percent of our budgeted operating revenues has come in. And we've spent about, and we spent about, is there a way to turn the speakers up? And there's a and yeah, we've about fifty-nine percent of our budgeted operating expenditures. So that's what we've spent. And we got our February distribution from the income taxes, as we've discussed before. And that we're on track to get about three point seven million in income tax compared to our budget of three point four five million. So we'll have a delta there of about two hundred and eighty thousand plus that we were not expecting in our, in our tax, in income tax distributions. There were no really outstanding other items that were, that need to be explored tonight. We, I did want to mention during the budget workshop, we're going to get a more detailed breakdown of each of these, each of the line items in the budget. So we'll see what, you know, who the major contractors are, what they, what expenses they have and stuff, so forth. And we'll be able to adjust some of our, our budget line items to, to, to more. We're pretty close on all of them. There's a few that we're, we need to adjust, but not a lot. So we're, we're in good shape, in good shape.
It's always good to be in good shape. Do my colleagues have any comments or questions for Rich?
I have one, which is, I know, for you, Rich, or for the, for the town office, but I'm looking at, one item that caught my attention, sort of where we've underspent, is the Rainscape program. We budgeted twenty-five, seventy-five thousand, and we spent twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty. So I guess the take-up has just been a lot less than we may have anticipated. Do we feel that people know about the program? Is there more advertising we should do?
Some of it is that the window did close, right? So there was, there was an over, not so much an oversubscription, but an oversubscription on, on the county side. So there's planned windows of, you know, opening and closing, and then they come back whenever they come back. So it, the other part is, I'm actually someone who went through the Rainscape program. Last year, I opened up a application in January and, and didn't get the Rainscapes rebate until this January.
From the county?
So it's a, it's a very delayed process. It's up and down. Not to say that people don't know about it, but it's a little cumbersome.
And to be quite, I don't, I, I don't think it's widely subscribed. I just don't think there's a lot of people in the town that want to take advantage of it. Some people do, and there's not, but there's, there's a large number that just don't, just don't want to do it. So.
Yeah, but good point nonetheless. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Todd, with the town manager's report, please.
Sure, thanks. I'll review staff activities over the last month. I'll be brief. Regarding Corso or on the Corso front, nothing noteworthy, except that Dave did reach out to, and was in touch with the developer's engineering firm to request the status update on the tree inventory improvement application they'll make to conform to the town's urban forest ordinance. They responded that the next phase of the work that follows the site plan is still getting started, and that will let us know when the work related to the tree permit, tree permits gets underway. On the Bethesda Market Park and Purple Line fronts, those matters will be discussed later this evening. Attainable Housing Strategies Initiative, I assisted with writing testimony for Maryland to deliver at the planning board meeting or listening session, which they're calling it, at tomorrow's planning board meeting. I submitted that testimony this morning. I also assisted with writing town testimony and to submit to the Maryland House Environment and Transportation Committee regarding Governor Moore's Housing Expansion and Affordability Act. Regarding town park and waterway improvement projects, Zimmerman Park improvements will be discussed this evening. And with respect to the cochlea Run stabilization, we're pretty much ready to go. We're ticking and tying that up. And we'd like to undertake that simultaneous to the Zimmerman Park improvements, because it'll be the same contractor likely will mobilize at the same time to do both projects, likely sometime in July. We continue to work with the town civil engineer to, or excuse me, on plans for stormwater management improvements on Leland and Woodbine Streets. Dave and I met with MCDOT officials regarding an MOU or cost sharing for these improvements. And they indicated on a follow-up that the county attorney is still reviewing the MOU. But Dave and I were actually quite happy to be able to secure from MCDOT a commitment to fund pretty much the entirety of the costs of constructing the Leland Street storm drain to the tune of quarter million dollars from the county's drainage assistance request, drainage assistance request program. And while the town will fund the engineering costs, the construction costs are the lion's share of what the entire cost of the project will be. So this was a significant win for us to have been able to get this funding commitment from MCDOT. Dave continued to coordinate with PSC on several proposed traffic safety intersection improvement projects. He also handled several complaints regarding purple line construction, its impacts to residents' properties. I'm completing the draft FY twenty-five budget and will distribute the budget documents, as Rich indicated, this Friday in anticipation of the budget work session next Wednesday at 5:00 PM by Zoom. Staff continued preparations for the 2024 Town Council election, and we planned for infrastructure improvements, asphalt and concrete repairs this summer. But that concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Todd. Any questions or comments?
I want to make, I want to make one as well. The, just maybe, you know, one of our residents had a situation where a tree in the back of the property fell and hit part of the house. It was really very serious. And fortunately, they got very prompt help, but I was specifically told just this afternoon that they really want to thank Dave in particular for his help in making sure that Pepco got there quickly and reconnected the power line in a timeframe they were quite amazed about. So just wanted to pass that on.
That's great. Thanks.
Excellent. Wonderful. Okay, so we'll move over to public comments. We're actually going to have two separate, if you will. There's public comments on anything that's on people's minds, and then the secondary public comment period will be specific to the, any ideas or, or comments about the next year fiscal year twenty-five budget. So I'll just start out, I don't know how many of those on the, are on the line, but happy to open it up to anyone with general public comments. Can you appear? Oh, can we just first, yeah, thank you. Sorry. Anyone else? I don't see any hands. Sorry, Chris. Come on up now. We'll move over to budget.
I'd like to first, as always, thank the council members for all you do on behalf of residents. It's appreciated. In 2014, the Town Council adopted a contribution policy at the request of the Community Relations Committee. To contribute funds for charitable purposes, grants must directly benefit town residents and, and contribute to the broader good. I couldn't find any information on the town website about the history of grants since 2014. I see in the FY twenty-four budget an allocation of one point zero five million for grants. I'm wondering how that money was allocated. I'm not sure if that's all part of the contributions allocation, and how much is going to be allocated in FY twenty-five budget for contributions. And just in closing, I would like a more transparent discussion of the town's contribution budget with input from residents on possible candidates for grant funds. Is that possible? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on FY twenty-five budget? Not seeing online either. Chris will get that information. Thank you. That closes the comment period, so we'll now go into council discussions. This first part is, there's, if you will, discussion and possible introduction of an ordinance to amend Chapter One, the general provisions of the town code, to clarify the language and revise the list of county laws applied in the town. So this is a result. Apparently, if I'm not mistaken, since nine, not since nineteen eighty-eight, has there been, been busy? Has there been a review to find out what has changed with respect to county code that might be applicable to, to the, the town? That might be adopted or, or opted in, opted out. So the Land Use Committee, under the chairmanship of Deedon Ingram, took a look at all the different chapters that were applicable. Of course, there are some that we cannot opt out of. There's health and zoning and others like that. But the other chapters that are out there, they, they took a look at all of them. And the result is a, something that we can all discuss as a council that we would be looking at those chapters to opt into an update. There's some verbiage changes. This is a bit of a more cleanup housekeeping effort than anything substantive necessarily. That being said, there is some warranty language changes and remind me, Todd, there's two other areas. I apologize, I'm blanking out.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay.
Let's see.
We discussed it this morning, and I totally forgot.
I know. Let's see, home warranties and oh my gosh, I'm blanking too. Sorry about this. Let me check here real quick.
No.
The roadside tree laws.
That we're not opting into.
That we're not opting into, since the council found them to be unnecessary, given the applicability of the Maryland roadside tree law.
Communities, childcare.
That's right.
Yeah, arts, and so the arts and humanities section, so that those artists in our community, by opting into that chapter, allow for their eligibility for, for county grants when it comes to arts, arts efforts. Childcare, again, it goes into the, the ability for people who want to have very small childcare facilities in their homes apply to, to go through all the licensing and all of that. It would not be something that competes with wonders or very, very small scale there. New home warranty, that's something that we discussed because there's a, not discrepancy, there's a difference between the county law and the state law. Public services underground facilities. That was just misutility, making sure that we're, we're in there, there isn't an issue. And then deciding not to, to adopt the tree canopy at the right of way, because we considered it to be onerous for residents. And those are the chapters. So I want to open it up to any discussions by my colleagues about this ordinance, potential ordinance. Oh, sorry.
I think this is very good work. I think we're all, we had a good discussion, so there shouldn't be much controversy about any of this. The only thing I wonder about is, right up front, Section one seven C. We did look for a narrowing of this language so we could understand it better. And I'm still not sure I'm comfortable with the word replaced. I'm happy to say that, as may be amended or relocated. But replaced suggests to me that it could be completely upended and be entirely new or different. And I'm not sure that I feel quite that comfortable with that degree of expansiveness. I mean, if they, maybe others don't care, but to me, I would be comfortable just saying, as may be amended or relocated. And we're accepting the notion that the amendments probably won't be too drastic. But if it's replaced, who knows what it's replaced with? And I just feel like that's overly broad for us to endorse without, without review.
Yeah, I believe that was standard language, as titles are changed and all that, but that's, that's the amended part.
Yeah, then that's, amendments are fine. I'm not worried. I would, I would suggest we consider deleting the word.
Deleting the word replaced.
I think we ought to ask Ron what replaced means. Because it, it probably has a definition somewhere in it. If it doesn't do what you say, which is take it out and then put something completely new in its place. And it's, it, it's in fact just putting it someplace else.
Well, then it's relocated.
That's why, that's why I think we need Ron to tell us what that means. And I, I'm, I don't know.
Replace could just mean updated, but we don't know.
We don't know. I don't know it's amended. I don't know.
Personally, it doesn't bother me, but, because I, I I don't think, I don't think that the intent of this would ever be read to include, for instance, our exempting ourselves from a section of the code where then the number then changes completely, and so the topic changes, we, that would not, that, nothing we do would be interpreted that way. So I'm, I'm comfortable with this, but I'm also fine waiting.
I feel like the titles that we're looking at as well. The, I, I don't know what would change in animal control or bicycles or something that would replace, that would cause a stir for us. So that, when I'm looking at the, the, the list of chapters, the title of the chapters as well, elm disease, eating and drinking establishments, you know, stuff like that, that we that one word.
Right. And I don't, I don't think our intention would be interpreted that way, but yeah.
Okay. I don't know, to be frank, what the rule is. Go ahead, Todd.
I have a suggestion. If you want to, if you want to introduce it as it's, as it is in front of you, then you can always ask Ron at the public hearing next month to clarify, and you can modify at that time and then adopt the ordinance if you wish.
Thank you. That was, that was my question. I didn't want to delay it over one, one word.
You don't have to. That wouldn't be a substantive modification that would be made that would require reintroduction. It's a very minor modification. And you can consult with Ron next month if you'd like.
Thank you. Any other comments or concerns, questions? Okay, then I guess we'll entertain a motion. Introduce.
Move to adopt the ordinance?
No, not move to introduce it, the introduction of the ordinance.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Thank you. We will introduce that for public comment next month. Zimmerman Park Improvements is next on the list. I don't know if Jason has joined yet.
He has not.
Okay. Would you prefer, if it's okay with my, do you want to skip this and move on to other areas? And when, when Jason joins, then go back to Zimmerman Park? What's your thought?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's keep rolling.
So we'll skip Zimmerman Park for a second. Attainable Housing Strategies Initiative. So as mentioned during Todd's manager's report, there is a planning department-led initiative that is intended to look at zoning across the county to allow for more alternatives when it comes to housing. So instead of neighborhoods that are just single-family homes and other areas that have apartment buildings and nothing much in between in different neighborhoods, the intent is to introduce more housing options. The, there are proposals in place in terms of, a recommendations report, I should say, that are, before undergoing work sessions in front of the planning board, the planning board has asked for comments. So it's like, before we're getting the full details, we're asked to comment on the initial set of recommendations. So that listening session will happen tomorrow afternoon and tomorrow evening in front of the planning board. I will be testifying. And Todd, if you wouldn't mind for tomorrow, sending out a town crier with a link to this testimony so that everyone is aware. The, we've met, I, we met with the Joint Land Use Committee and, and Long Range Planning Committee on March fourth to gain their feedback on these recommendations. In addition, we've heard from a lot of residents about the, the different recommendations, questions, concerns, and comments. And in synthesizing all of that information, the general, you know, testimony that I'll, I'll provide tomorrow says that, you know, as a town, we're very much in favor of creating more housing options and be a more kind of inclusive community. That being said, there are a lot of questions that we have about the recommendations themselves. While as a whole, we've heard from many town residents that they're in support of duplexes, there are still some question, duplexes built by right within the community. There are some questions about triplexes. And the, right now, the recommendations report calls for quadplexes being built by right, because we happen to be within one mile of a metro station or purple line station. And we being the, the thousand thirty-two lots that exist in the town Chevy Chase. So we, the, the testimony is now reads is that the preference for looking at these so-called priority housing districts more as a minor master plan amendment process, rather than just like full-scale, one-size-fits-all, and just saying that across the county. That priority housing districts might be better served elsewhere, that is to say, the building quadplexes by right. In addition to that, there's another optional method of development that's been recommended called the attainable housing optional method of development, or AHOM, A-H-O-M. That is specifically for lots that are but growth corridors, which for the town of Chevy Chase is Connecticut Avenue. In addition to other growth corridors that have a BRT line and then River Road inside the Beltway. So that's generally what are considered growth corridors across the county. The attainable housing optional method of development is meant to offer, if you will, bigger, bigger structures that would have smaller units averaging fifteen hundred square feet or less, so that there's the allowance for even more options for, for people who want to live in smaller places. So again, we feel that the determination of attainable housing optional method of development areas should be determined through a minor master plan amendment. So that's in essence what the, the testimony that I'll provide tomorrow is, is providing. Again, it'll be available to all the residents tomorrow, so they can read for themselves tomorrow morning. And yeah, I don't have much more to say than that. This is the start of the process. So what is going to happen is the testimony will occur tomorrow. Over the next six weeks, there'll be four to five weeks, six weeks, it will be work sessions where the planning board will, I'm sorry, the planning department will present more of the details and answer questions from the planning board members. The intent, or the, the schedule right now for the planning department is to deliver a set of recommendations, kind of like, here's your à la carte menu of options to the county council by June the first. What happens after that, we, we don't have visibility into right now. So it'll be a busy summer. Great. Anything else? Yeah.
First of all, I think it's, your testimony is a very good piece of work. So thank you for everything you've put into that. The, what I want to raise, and I've raised with some of you, and I want to ventilate it here, is that I think one of the things we, I would certainly like to have, and I think it'd be good to be able to have more conversations with residents, is to really try to assess what the impact could be of different, some of these different recommendations on our town. And we have some very good anecdotal evidence, or anecdotal thinking, including from Eric here in our audience. But there are a number of real estate agents in town. And I think generally, we felt that the analytical work done by the county planning department, last time all this came up, was actually pretty light and not very thorough. And I wondered, ask if it made sense for us to reach out and try to find a consultant who could work strictly for us, who would really bear, not, not come at it from an economic analysis, but informed by actual real estate, you know, conversations with real estate agents, actual prices for homes, and actually try to give us an assessment, which is what it really comes down to, which is, at different levels of increment, increments of density, presumably, the land values of a teardown are going to go up. By how much? What will be the cutoff points and what might be the pace of change? But I think that's what really people would love to have some understanding of. And, and we, we honestly just don't know. And obviously, there's a limit to what a consultant can say. I mean, the consultant is also still going to be forecasting. But I, I think it would just give us some better grounding as we consider both what the recommendations may be that are going to come down the pike from this à la carte menu you referred to, but also potentially help us when we fashion the final round of testimony that you'll be giving in front of the, the county council. And I don't know whom we approach. It's just an idea at the moment. If there's a sense that makes sense to look at that, I think we'd want to try to reach out and find someone, and only after finding somebody and getting a sense of what it might cost, come back and ask for the money. But, and it's not something that should be done tomorrow. It's going to take time. But I want to put that out there for everyone's consideration.
I, I agree. I think we ought to do some analysis that I, I'm in that real-world analysis, I'd like to have not only the, kind of the value analysis of the, the property and the, what gets built. I'd also like to have what I call an impact analysis as well, which is, if, based on real, real data, not forecast data, which is, if you build a triplex, how many additional cars does that put on, on a property? Because that directly impacts our streets, if, if we can't, you know, and how much land would be used for a parking pad or things like that. So it, it's not just the economics, but the, the other impact analysis that, that I would be interested in looking at as well. Add on to your thought.
Thank you.
I also think that would be really helpful to have, and I think it will also help us formulate our thinking more insofar as it's relevant to, to any of the decision-makers about what, what goals we're actually trying to achieve and whether this particular way of going about it meets those goals. Like if we're talking about, as you did in the testimony, more diversity in the town and how we're really into inclusiveness, I personally, sitting here right now, I'm not convinced that this is going to result in much more affordable housing, and maybe on the margins, a little bit more affordable, but I don't think it's going to be dramatic. Now, I do, I happen to believe that an increase in housing supply in general brings housing prices down and will lead to more affordable housing. If you look at the market, you know, southern Montgomery County wide or countywide or whatever, I think it's helpful. But insofar as our job is to represent the interests of the town, I think it would be helpful for us to figure out which goals we're meeting and which we're not, and where to take it from there.
Thank you. Joy? So I thought about this a little bit until you said about the traffic component, thought maybe, you know, we utilized a consultant initially for the Corso project. So I wonder if that real estate company So I wonder if that real estate company might be a, and you know, potential, potential folks to speak with about this. So just, just initially.
I wasn't here for that, but if it's someone who mainly specializes in traffic, it feels like it's a little.
Oh, no, no, this is the real estate side of it. The first part of what Barney was talking about. I, I don't know how to solve that problem.
Other than assume it's one car per unit or something like that.
Right.
There are measures sometimes.
Okay.
Number of toilets.
Cars?
Cars.
Yeah.
I've never heard of that.
Interesting metric.
I don't know the current research that's been done. It's probably out there somewhere, but we, it would be nice to have some.
Okay. I think Irene, the, I think going back to Sapples is a very good idea to start. I think that they, I think that may lead to our recommendations of who might really be able to help us, but it's a good place to start. They're good people. They, they gave us good advice and they thought hard about the issues. Their focus is on commercial real estate. So I don't know whether they'd be the right people to assess, okay, if a developer is coming in and wants to put up a duplex, here's what it costs per square feet, here's how much property he's going to want to make.
Good point.
And, and, and therefore the tear down price can't be more than X if he thinks the market price for his units are Y. And, and likewise with the triplex calculation. So I'm not, I won't rule Sapples out. I just, I'd be surprised if they could do that. But I would also think that they would be able to put us in touch with the kind of people who think about that.
Yeah, makes sense.
The other person we could obviously ask would be EYA, not to do the work because that would be obviously a conflict. But make a recommendation of who might be.
Sure.
But I, I, I want to get to, I think what our, our arguments will be before the county council. Because I think one of the, one of the things that we're trying to stress is we want to retain some authorities in the town to regulate the R six, the R sixty something.
Yeah.
And those, those things are for various reasons, for our canopy, for our parking. And for those, that's the data I want to get at. What, what is going to be the impact of those housing types on those things that we could regulate? Because we're not going to be able to regulate the price. We're not going to be able.
Yeah, I think alongside that is, is what is our current street parking capacity as well. And I don't think that that, that has been done and, and therefore, you know, I, I think I've mentioned to you all that we, we have been contacted, though we haven't heard from them in a bit, from a local, one of the fire, fire rescue services saying, there's a few of your streets we're, we're really worried about. So obviously that needs to be done as well. So.
I, I think if we go that direction, I think we may need two different consultants because I don't think we're going to find one consultant.
Correct, correct, correct. Okay, thank you. So we'll jump back now to Zimmerman because I see that Jason is on. Yeah, he's, I could see him right there. Hi, Jason.
Now he's on.
Hello.
How are you?
I'm good.
Good. So, um, very good. So we are at a point with Zimmerman Park where it's been after many, many years of discussions, dare I say, a few councils. At least, and lots of discussions with residents, area residents, some wonderful work done on the design front. We've gotten over a lot of hurdles as it relates to just the bureaucratic, you know, getting the permits and, and figuring this all out. And we are at a point right now where we have to make a decision about what we want to do moving forward. And so we thought bringing Jason here to ask some, some questions and, and thank you, Dave, for preparing the report, Todd, and Dave for preparing the, the recommendations report in terms of staff and their thoughts and kind of figure this out and give, give some direction tonight. So that's my goal, is some direction, clear cut direction and move forward. This is a beautiful space that needs some TLC and, and some amenities. So let's see what we can do. So let's first start, since we do have Jason here. There's been a lot of, there's been the design plan and then there's been some feedback from, from the utilities that, you know, you can't do this, but you can do that, which just altered some, some thoughts on things. And then we recently had, I think in December, we had a landscape depression, I like to call it, but it's also known as a small sinkhole, which was repaired. And so just to put everyone kind of on the same page, if you will, what has changed in terms of your thinking and understanding with respect to the amenities that have been designed or planned out? Given the hurdles, what, what we do know, what we don't know in terms of the infrastructure underneath and, and where you all, where you are at this point before we start asking our questions?
Is that for me or for Dave?
That's for you. That's for you, Jay.
Well, so I, I, I think we, we have been able to, to jump over all the hurdles and we are in the home stretch to get approval for all the improvements that were contemplated. And right now, the, the final piece is recording a, a right of entry agreement to, for a deep DEP to inspect the stormwater facility at their leisure after it's installed to get that up done. And then our final WSCC approval, we were, we, they had asked for a, a list of equipment that would be used during the construction, which we received a sample list of equipment from a contractor to provide them. And to try to get that. So we're very close, probably within weeks of having all of our approvals in place for all of the improvements that were contemplated. So I think that's good because it's, it, it has been kind of a, a long ride. But I do think that it, it's, it's a good idea to just keep going and get the permits for everything that you may want to build. But it doesn't commit you to actually building it all. Or at least not in, in the immediate future, you could do it, you know, as phased over time. And I think there's some, some validity to maybe, given the, the age of some of the infrastructure under the park, whether it's WSSCs or DOTs. You alluded to that, that, that problem that you had back in December. And there's no guarantee that that won't happen again. It could. So, you know, I, I, it's probably a little out of my lane to tell you that you, you should, you know, not to build something, but I, I think it's, it's important if, if you have the permits in hand that it would give you the ability to build it as time goes on. So you could do an initial construction phase to get the park generally the way that you want it. And then add amenities as time goes on, whether that's the, the completion of the sidewalk, the bump out and the roadway, the, 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 the French drain system, which, you know, the, the use of the park maybe has changed a little bit from initial thoughts that maybe it's, it's not as necessary as it once was. You know, or fencing, you know, that's all stuff that could be phased in over time if desired. So I, 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 I think Dave had some recommendations in, in his, his memo. And I read through that and I, I think I, you know, I generally agree with what he said. That it's, you know, a, a kind of a measured approach to the implementation of the approved plan is, is probably a pretty good idea.
Barney, I know you had a question around that, that underlying infrastructure and the recommendation.
Yes, I did. I wanted to make, I appreciate the memo and the thought that went into it, some very good ideas in it to to phase it in a lot of which I agree with. But one that I gave me pause was the one about eliminating the French drains. For two reasons. One is at the time we approved the project, we specifically were told, believed that that would materially help speed up the drying out of, of the area. That was one of the major goals that residents talked to us about. And, and if that's still true, then begs the question, why drop it? Presumably, I guess, because of the sinkhole and the fear that another sinkhole could erupt. And if so, then in the process of fixing that future sinkhole, there'd also then have to be repairs that would be on our, that we'd have to pay for to repair the French drain that might be damaged in the immediate proximity of that sinkhole. I guess my first question is, well, how big a deal could this be? And we're talking about, tell me, help me understand French drains and how expensive they are to repair. But I'm not, I'm, I'm just asking the question, is it really that big a deal that we should back away from putting in the French drain system? Which was a feature that when we did the planning, we had all thought was quite helpful in achieving one of the goals of the residents.
So I, I can briefly say, we're estimating that system's probably going to be around, I think, thirty-five thousand dollars to install that French drain system. So depending on if, if there was a, you know, a, a situation with that storm drain that, that like happened in December, you know, or something like that. A good chunk of it would, you know, get damaged, depending on where the, where it was. It happened. So there, there's, I guess, that risk. The other thing I, I think is worth noting, I, there was a, a lot of talk about, initially, you know, that this area would, you know, wanted to dry it out really quick, which is what the French drain system would do. Is that it would, would get that, the wetness, I guess. So that, that would be there after a heavy rain event and dry it out quick, quickly. And there was talk, I guess, the, the, it seems that the, the function of the park maybe has shifted a little bit. Ted, at one time, there, those thoughts of even, of having dogs there and stuff to the, the possibility of, you know, people like playing football and stuff out there. Well, that, that could, still could happen. I, I think we were kind of, and, and I talked to Dave about this is that thirty-five grand didn't seem like, you know, inexpensive. That seems like a pretty, at least to me, it seems like a lot of money to put it in with the risk of it's, it would get probably pretty severely damaged when a excavator or something went out there to repair a, a utility line. You gotta remember the, the French drains are, they're only, you know, a few, they're not very deep. So that a, a big excavator driving over them may damage them just from driving over it, not just digging through it. So I, I think there was concern that it, if there was a repair on one of those lines, it, it could be a significant cost to the town to fix it. And then if you fixed it once, it's like something happened to the storm drain line and DOT came out to fix it and you fix the French drain. It's also, there's two water lines that go under it as well. That if something happened to a water line, I, I think we just, while there's a, a benefit to the usability of the park quickly, you know, right after a storm event, that risk of potentially having to repair this more than once, you know, is, seems like a, a pretty big risk, you know, how often it may happen, I don't know, but you know, if, if in the next five years you had to shell out another thirty-five thousand, is it, I mean, is it, is it worth it? You know, or something like that. Or if it, if it happened multiple times over the course of the next fifteen years, is it worth it to gain that usability maybe one day earlier? Or something like that for the park for the risk of having to maybe replace this every time WSCC or, or DOT comes in to dig up one of those pipes?
Can I? When I, I, the idea of having the area dry out is, is attractive. How fast it dries out is, is debatable.
Yes.
It looks like you've, you have a drainage plan that takes a lot of the rainwater now off, off and doesn't allow it to, to, to come down into that field again. So if you were in, instead of with a drain field in, it would take two days to dry out with a drainage, only the drainage system, it would take three, four days. I mean, it's, is that, is it going to be a significant difference now with the, the drainage plants?
No, it's going to be a day or two. And, and, and you're right, you did point out that some of the, the drainage and, and the items around changed. The initial design had the sidewalk raised up a little bit and we had a small inlet picking up water on the, on the, the field side so that, you know, it, it potentially could, could capture water because we were not going out, you know, closer, closer to the, and, and going and tying into the, to the, the flume down by the corner. But with the current design as it sits and it's, is it, it's going to get approved, there's going to be free flow of water on the surface across the sidewalk and down to the flume. And then you make a good point that as part of the permitting process with SHA, they had us create in a swale kind of along east-west highway so that any water that potentially comes out of the, if, if that inlet that where the top is lifted off in the past, that water would have a kind of a, a channel to flow down to get to the corner instead of flowing out into the park as it, as it currently does. So I, I, I think you're right. It's, it's, it's a difference of like a, a day or two in terms of drying out because of those advantages. But I mean, ultimately it will take longer, but I don't think it's appreciable. It's, it's a day or two compared to with, with the, the French drain system.
Thank you. One other follow-up. What would happen if we did not repair the French drain system? Supposing, in other words, we said, okay, we're, we're going to put it in, but we're not going to spend over and over again to repair it. If we end up with a lot of sinkholes, we'll just end up with the system gradually being destroyed, but that's life. Is there anything, is there any downside to that?
No, then it would just function as if there wasn't a French drain system there.
The other question, which actually let me raise this, I just, this, what your first comment, Jason, caused me to recall something we had discussion about with a, with the first landscape architect who helped us out. A very elaborate drainage system had been proposed. And then because it was going to drain so fast, she was also recommending an irrigation system to what the law. And so I, I just want to be assured, and I don't know how, you know, council may not want to, but if we were to put in this version of the, of the drain system, what is still, would it trustfully, would, would it not cause us to feel that the grass, the grass get more dried out or, or are we still sort of walking a, a tight walk, a tight rope on this one?
No, I, I, we, we use systems like that at athletic facilities all the time. They're, they're spaced out.
It doesn't speed up the drying out. It doesn't, it doesn't cause the grass to, to, to dry out.
No, I mean, in, in, in the dead of summer, there is a very good chance that you will see brown spots along the tops of those French drains because they are obviously going to dry, dry out, but they're spaced far enough apart that it shouldn't drain out the whole area. Out of any, you know, down where you are, you probably don't, you don't have septic systems. But if you ever see somebody's septic system in the middle of summer, like in their, in their yard, you'll, you can, you can outline the, where the, the trenches are. It's kind of a similar thing.
I, I thought the grass always grew greener over the septic tank.
Yeah, well, it doesn't keep any water there. Depends. Septic tank, maybe, but not, not, not the, the lines.
So I think the place to start here is with this system, you know, kind of, if we kind of break this up into chunks here. I, I don't want to cut anyone else off of their comments about this, this drainage system and whether we should stick with a plan that installs this system or what, what is proposed as well as the regrading of this land and towards a swell that will be not drying up in fifteen, twenty minutes, thirty minutes, half hour or whatever, but still will be much more usable than this today. So with that being said, I'd like to hear comments and, and thoughts on how to proceed with this. how to proceed with this. And then I'll just layer it on top of that.
Apologize. I don't know if anyone heard all that. It was unread.
We heard it.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're trying to take a vote on sort of a
I'm trying to take yeah. So the first item is this, this, this elaborate system underneath, or do we go with the regrading? Part of the project. So jump in.
It all, it all depends upon whether you think $35,000 is a significant chunk of change and to, to do this. And like, like we've heard, it's, it, it's, it's a shallow trench with essentially ground cloth and gravel in it that takes it and, and pipe with holes in it that takes it, takes the water off of the top of the surface of the, the field. So if, if 35,000, if it's worth $35,000 to everybody to put that in, it's not going to make any difference if there, if something else has to happen because all we do is we lose that $35,000. We don't have to replace it with another drainage system. You can just leave it as it is. So, and, and you still have the drainage, the other drainage working. So I, it, it's, it's whether you guys think $35,000 is
Worth it.
Yeah, it's worth it.
I don't know if it's appropriate for me to say anything, but I think the items that David put in his memo, they were kind of specifically pulled out as things that can be easily added after. Like this drain system, if you were to find out that it wasn't draining fast enough for your that, like you wanted, then you, it, it could be easily added after.
Thank you. That's a good point. I mean, it, it, they're not complex systems. They're not, they're, they're just not. You dig a, dig a trench, you lay some fabric down, you put some gravel and you put a pipe in, put some more gravel on it and you cover it over. And it's, they're, they're not expensive. It's as it, as it, it's $35,000 for that whole field. So yeah, so it's, it's a good point you made. Thank you. Let me, I, I get, I take that point about the fence and some of the, you know, the sidewalk, I'm, I, but I'm not so convinced about this because we're going to be putting down sod, we're going to make, we're going to want to make the, you know, a really nice surface. If then we decide to go in and put in a whole new drainage system, strikes me, that's going to be rather bigger deal than we might otherwise think. I, I sustain from delaying putting in the fencing for a while, for example. Jason, this is, this is a tech, I, I've, I've
Well, I mean, obviously you'll disturb some of the sod. I mean, that to put something in later, but I, you know, I, I think a lot of it depends on the time of year. You know, if you're to do something in the spring, you're going to tear up a lot more sod than if you did it in August, for instance, or something like that. Or, you know, it's the type of project, this French drain project, it could be put in by a landscape company. It wouldn't, you wouldn't have to hire a general contractor to put in, like you may be hiring to build the park as a whole. So there may be other avenues to get it, to get it done, maybe for, for less. You know, I, I think we're, we're figuring on 35,000 because it's going to be built as part of a, a contract with the general contractors, potentially going to sub it out to, you know, to a, to a subcontractor.
I have a question. So, so suppose we included the French drain as part of the, you know, if we were phasing the project, we're grading it, we're putting that soil down there at the East West Highway end, we are installing this French drain system, and then we have another sinkhole, which essentially, you know, kills the, the workings of the French drain system. Does that compromise the integrity of the field in any way that you have these drains sitting there that are damaged?
Yeah, no, it wouldn't affect it.
I call for a vote.
Oh, let's say, I think, yeah, you are, I feel like you are way. I am, I just want to be able to be on the record to say I am not in favor of, of installing something that we're already providing language of, eh, if it breaks, we'll just leave it. If there's another sinkhole, may or may not damage it. I, I'm personally not in favor of spending public money to put in something that has a lot of question marks around it for a field that we hope will be more activated, but we're just not sure what's going to happen over time. If this is something that can be installed later because everyone's using it, it's like you need a schedule to use that, that field in the future, I think that's a much different conversation to have than today. Where this is, this is an issue of we're looking at a better drainage situation than what exists today to understand better how that could be a, a more usable space, peaceful space as well as, you know, little active space, kids throwing their ball or whatever. So I just want to mention that for myself, but.
Okay, I, I do have something I want to say now.
There you go. There you go.
What, since I was not on the council many moons ago, when the improvement to this park was first discussed, can someone enlighten me on what, what the intended use is of the various parts of the park once the renovation is done? Like what's, like, what are we doing with that field?
Yeah. So right now, and because I just live up the street from, from there, um, right now it's, it's utilized.
Yeah, I've been passed it a million times. I know.
No, but like by, like small family groups, the, the people learning, kids learning different sports and stuff like that. And when different residents were interviewed, I don't know if that's the right, we just surveyed about possible uses, there was a lot of like, oh, I'd really like the ability. I, I feel like it's always muddy. I'd like this to be drying out a little bit and have a bit, bit more useful. Also the leveling part of it, what they were going to do with that once it's leveled and draining? I'm not sure.
The other parts were, there was a real intent to connect the, what's the
Dennison Garden.
Thank you. Dennison, Dennison Gardens through, make it a walkable lane. So, because it, it dead ends now at the end of the garden to continue that up so that it goes up to the street or sidewalk or something. So that was, that was one. And to make that, to make that space along that sidewalk, pretty much as we discussed about Rosemary, it's a nice place to sit, be a nice place to picnic. So people wanted either park benches or picnic tables there and stuff like that. So that was kind of the intent of the extension of the walkway. And the grassy area was to really just make it more usable, not, you know, not, not that we were going to have scheduled, it's, the field's not a, not going to fit a regulation sized soccer field or, or football field. It's, it's a practice area. So
And potential like pop-up dog park type of thing.
Yeah. And, yeah, and one of the, one of the contentious items was the dog park, which we, which we mixed. So that, that was kind of the background of it.
Shall we move to a vote? All right. I don't know what to vote on. Yes or no? I will go forth and just put in the, the, taking on the staff's recommendation for regrading this, this grassy area, allowing for better drainage than what exists today. Yes, or, yes, or instead put in the French drain. So I don't know.
Instead or and?
No, it's instead.
No? It's hand.
Yeah, they're, they're still going to do the drainage.
Yeah, the drain, but we're talking about the French drain. So the insulation of the whole
It's, yeah, it's either the, the, the re, the regrading.
Connection to the inlet.
Yes.
Right, right.
So that happens, I guess.
Yes.
The next step would be, do we also install?
Do we also install the French?
Separately on each?
Yeah.
Whatever y'all, I'm, I've lost track. I think we're all in agreement about the regrading going down the swell. So I think we're all saying, yes or no on French drain? That's what we're.
I vote, I vote yes on the French drain.
All right.
I vote yes on the French drain.
Okay. I vote no.
Yeah, I'm, I'm on the fence about that because I, you know, I can't say I disagree that, you know, should, I, I take the engineers seriously when they're recommending that this might be a foolhardy expense. And I also wonder might, you know, is there some other, you know, if we, if we didn't spend that, might there be some other amenity that we could include there? When we approved this, when we approved this project, that was what, like three or four years ago? So there is some inflation here that I think is not, that I don't know if you've updated this, Dave, for inflation in terms of Oh, they are. Okay. So then that might account for, you know, increase in equipment or other amenities and all that kind of stuff. Okay. All right.
So yes or no?
On the, on the French drain, yeah, I, I'm inclined to build the thing now and wait on the French drain.
So you're a no on the French drain. Okay. Rich?
I abstain. No. No, I, I, I vote no.
You vote no. Okay. This isn't to say that it can't be brought up at a future time, but it is three to two no. The next thing that we can talk about is the pathway. So there's a, within the design, there's, if I'm going to break it up into two, two different parts, there's the connecting pathway from the Dennison Garden all the way through to the point of which it can connect with a crosswalk that's across or near Blackthorn. And then there's a secondary pathway. I'm going to talk about the first part of this pathway and ask for whether folks want to include the, this first, if you will, southern part of the, of the park as, as a part of this project in this first phase.
Do you understand what that is? It's the part from the Dennison Gardens up to
Blackthorn. That's right.
Right. Where there is a crosswalk.
Where there's a, an existing crosswalk. Yeah.
And can we ask staff, Dave, can you, or, or Jason, can you just summarize for us? What is the issue with that pathway?
No issue with that pathway other than the fact that it's almost entirely over top of WSSC assets. So they've granted us a permission to build it. But, you know, there's a sanitary sewer line there that needs to be replaced and they can't relocate away from those that removed and we have to replace it.
Over the whole path? Is it just the northern part of the path or the southern part? I, I'm looking at the schematic and it looks like it's mostly the northern. Yeah, it's the next, next to the last slide.
I can share it, but I guess there is a so these are the WSSC assets that runs with there. And so almost the entire portion of, the entire portion of that is in a WSSC easement that they've granted us. You know, we don't have any indication, especially with the sanitary sewer line, that, you know, it would be work that's going to require less maintenance than water line because the water's not pressured. But, you know, it is a concern that we could build this and they come in and say, we can
There's stuff that runs under Dennison now.
Correct.
Yeah. So we've, we've yeah, yeah. Well, we found out about that. No, we, they, we didn't know about it, but we found out in time. But we've had Dennison under, meaning over that for a while.
Are there other locations in town where we've got town owned assets like sidewalks or rights of way over WSSC lines?
I mean, certainly all the streets. I mean, there are some other rights of way.
And so when they, and when they have come in and had to make repairs, we had to pay to fix the road back, right?
They usually restore. In this case, because of the way our recent agreements are, I don't know that they would protect the flagstone and all of the so we would work with them on a restoration plan. They would recreate it probably as part of their work, but build the reconstruction of the walkway back to the time.
In most, in most instances, they're not going to, unless it's a total replacement of the line, it's going to be a segment of the line which they repair. So it would be a part of this path that would get disrupted. It wouldn't necessarily be the whole path that gets taken out. Right? Okay. Yeah. So what was our issue with the, I, I, I'm, I thought there was more of an issue with the northern part.
The northern part, the other part, not the sidewalk we're discussing at the moment, but the other part of the side that it bumps out onto the street to further expand the green space of the, the play area, if you will. And initially we, we thought that we could plant some trees along there, but we're not allowed to do that at all. So not only is it, if you will, taking over a little bit of the, of, of maple, right, as, as it makes its way from Blackthorn towards East West Highway, but also we, it's just a bare, whatever thing in anticipation of a red signalization being installed at East West Highway. So so this first, oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Component of this portion of the path is that it does include, I guess, the three benches.
Yes.
Cable area.
Yep.
And then I assume the bike rack and the trash can and recycling.
That was going to be my next, yes, but first, first the, the sidewalk and then I was going to go to the amenities.
I want to make it simple. I'm in favor of everything to the north. The trail, all the amenities, full stop. I don't see any reason to change it.
Okay.
I agree.
I'm sorry, the whole trail or just this portion?
You want to take it in two, something, the whole northern portion, but all the amenities associated with the northern.
Oh, sees northern, I
Oh, I, I misspoke. My fault.
Okay.
The whole southern portion.
Okay.
And all the amenities associated.
Associated with it. Great. Let's do it. That's the vote.
Do it.
Yes, 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 yes. Unanimous. The northern portion of the sidewalk is next, which is part of that bump out portion. How are we all feeling about that?
I, I had only one question, even when we were talking about the original bump out. My, one of, one of the discussion, I'm just parking along, along there. If we took, if we didn't do the bump out, is, will that allow for more parking there? Will parking stop before, before we construct the bump out?
Parking is not allowed on that side of the street.
Right.
Tended to be used for staging to
Oh, you still do. Right. Yeah.
But I guess there could be a discussion about if we activate the park and desire to make, allow parking there, the streets are like, well, but it's not been specifically.
Well, my, I guess my question really, we can deal with whether or not we want to have people parking there or not. Would, would it give more space for, if we didn't do the bump out for you to stage the equipment? Is there any times when the staging of the equipment is a problem because there's not enough space there?
I mean, constructing the bump out would limit some of the space for some of the larger
Yeah.
Tend to stick down there. If we improve the parks, I might need to find a new place to put that equipment anyway, just people are using it. It's nice, you know, harder to there, you know, after all of the utility and paperwork that we've done over the last six or seven years, the residents down there are pretty fed up with it anyway.
Don't you mean to having things staged across from their houses? There's only three houses there. Right. Okay. Right.
Um, I thought it was a little bit more complicated, the bump out. So that was like another feature of this.
So there's, I guess, the continuation of the sidewalk, which can be done without actually changing the curb lane. So I guess there are two So I guess they're two separate things. The bump out does provide a little bit more green space between the curb and the walkway. So it provides a little bit of separation. We can't plant trees on most of that area, but we can certainly add some landscaping. I'm worried that installing that curb bump out, we just replaced the curb, we just paved the street two years ago. But just tying in the new curb with new asphalt, I think it's a little sloppy. On the street side is a concern that I have, but I don't think that's insurmountable if the council feels that extra four feet of park space is beneficial. It's not particularly expensive, six or seven thousand dollars for the concrete and the as much as the asphalt to tie it.
But this is another potential feature that could be added on later. It's not like it's go no go now for this this particular portion.
I mean, the correct time to do it is when you're resurfacing the road. Because then you can get the new curb line, get the grades of the asphalt set and then pave the entire street.
Okay.
So if we deferred the sidewalk and the bump out until the next time you do street repair, that's your preference?
Yeah, the curb bump out of the sidewalk, you know, we can do that. If it's deferred, you could do that at any time or we could do it at any time.
And the benefit of that north, the northern part of that sidewalk was that it took if if a kid would use that path to get to.
Once we get the the signal, so.
We get the signal, that's that's a direct sidewalk path.
That's right.
To that's.
That you're exactly right.
So.
But, yeah, I mean, we're gonna get the signal, we're waiting on the signal, it's been kind of.
So if we build the sidewalk and we defer the bump out until the next time you do road repairs, does that make?
Discuss it the next time we pave the street and see, you know, if there's.
I have a question like that. Help me out here. Why is it not possible to put the path where we initially intended, which is to sort of follow the bump out?
That was a design decision based on, I guess, trying to avoid. It avoids going over a WSC line for a portion of it. And I think there was just a desire to have a cleansing space.
For comfort kind of thing or?
Yeah, I guess. Jason.
Yeah, there I think there were several reasons. Part of it was that to minimize the amount that was over the utility, but also to create a green space between the the curve and the sidewalk. The other, I think, key option or key key reason was adjacent to the sidewalk, there is a micro infiltration trench or stormwater management. The sidewalk will drain into it. The micro infiltration trench had to be five feet off of any WSC asset. So we we couldn't, if we slid the sidewalk over to hug the immediately adjacent to the curb line, we wouldn't be able to put the treat treat the stormwater runoff. And we we were trying to maximize that area of the green space. So we consolidated it into two really small stormwater facilities kind of on the on the roadside.
The other is the other thing I was in in looking at the way it's drawn now is that you're taking a pedestrian not to the intersection, you're taking them to the
To Blackthorn.
To Black, well, no, 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 past Blackthorn. You're taking the the northern part takes you to East West Highway, but not at the not at the intersection. It's up it's up a ways, which is probably more safe for the kids than having them go to the corner. Corners are notoriously dangerous for turning vehicles and things like that.
Yeah, but there's no real turning going on there because it's a do not enter.
There is, even though there's.
There is illegal turning, but it's not it's not really that prevalent.
Not keeping it away from an intersection is a good idea.
Yeah, the county's part of the stormwater management requires this micro infiltration trench, which is a gravel pit that collects water from the top of the walkway and allows it to infiltrate. This has a setback from all of the WSC lines.
Okay.
Based on what we have to do and make that comment, you know, is the bump out not needed?
So the bump out is not needed to construct the walkway because it's behind the line of the current curb. If you add the bump out, it provides some green space that.
This provides green space on this.
On this side of the walkway.
But it doesn't increase the green space with the.
Correct. And we, you know, we have the room to plant, I think, two small trees down here at the end, but we can't plant any of the bump out here with anything other than some trouble.
So so as I understand it, based on what I just saw, that is that the if we built the bump out, we wouldn't really be using the bump out. So like there would be some unfortunate sod.
Good thing you're not British.
I hate sod, but anyway. But you know, I think originally we had thought we could plant trees there, but if now we can't plant trees there, I'm just wondering, why would we have the bump out? If now the way the drawing is the the walkway doesn't doesn't, you know, swing out anyway.
Mm hmm. Okay.
I'm feeling a little bit emotional about this because I've worked on this for seven years, all right? This is too much in one session. I'm not comfortable. I if 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 staff wants to recommend a change, I want to see the original plans. I want to understand the change very clearly. I'd be I I'm comfortable in not making a decision tonight to not right now authorize the sidewalk in the southern section. That's okay with me.
The the northern section.
I keep on forgetting my count. That's very unusual for me. I'm pretty good at directions, but the northern section talking about. I said, okay, just leaving that undecided. I'm not comfortable agreeing on the sidewalk being built without further review of exactly where it's going to go. I may get there and ultimately be convinced that the sidewalk cannot be bent out, but I haven't heard something compelling tonight that I understand. And I'm just not prepared with all the other things on the agenda tonight to make that decision. So that's my view of this, you know, I could rule that's fine. But otherwise, I would prefer that this that the council just not decide either the sidewalk on the north or the bump out until we have a more thorough review of that issue.
Okay. I I think that's fair. I mean, I I was personally leaning towards we need more information to understand also the usage of the area, if that signal is going to be put in, so why not have them come back at a separate time? Yeah, southern portion completely. Let's let's go forward with that.
So the northern portion includes the fence.
That's right.
Could I just say something briefly about the fence? Just put my two cents in now while we continue to review this. I am, again, as the newcomer into this lengthy process, read about how we maybe need to see how the sediment settles and how the drainage works and everything. I, however, am strongly in favor of a fence sooner rather than later around that area. I think it makes it infinitely more usable for little kids. As a parent, I would be really uncomfortable letting my kid run around there and potentially run after balls and stuff as they went out on the street. I understand the need to maybe wait and make sure that, you know, the plantings are are taking root and the grass is growing and everything, but I would, sitting here right now, be in favor of getting that fence up as soon as is practicable. I think it will really improve the use of the place. That's that's all I have to say about that.
So just so just just so you're it's it's not an enclosed fence, it's just there and higher on the on the hill.
Still helpful.
No, I just want to make sure that you're aware because you're saying. Thank you for that. Other thoughts on the fence?
Yeah, the comment I made about was only about leaving the sidewalk and the bump out, not the fence. I I tend to agree with you about the fence. I think there's a question about the exact height, which some of that has thought about that, but but I think bearing in mind if there's a legitimate reason to defer some months, I don't know what the time is for settlement, I get that. But to me, it's that's also important. And that's also something which came up in the residence discussions, you know, once they realized what we're looking at. And we talked about the program, which is basically a partial fence, which would be completed if and when we had, you know, pop up dog parks. Otherwise, the part part of it would be permanent. There were a lot of parents who said absolutely exactly what you're saying, which is that's going to increase the use of this. So to me, you know, rather than thinking, well, let's see what it looks like and how much it's used. I think we should basically stick to the plan, which was put in a fence because a lot of residents wanted it. And we can discuss a bit more about the height and exactly its full extent, but you know, we agreed to it. I wouldn't I don't want to walk back from it.
I have a question about the the sidewalk and you know, wherever it would go, if it, you know, the part of the sidewalks or the north part of the sidewalk that goes all the way to east west. Is that does that have, I can't read these drawings. I'm sorry, I'm not an engineer. Does that have anything to do with where the fence is placed? Yeah?
Fence goes, I was to the inside of the walkway is.
Or is it this?
To the south of the fence.
Do you have the drawing so that you can see where the fence is? Because the small.
The small, yeah, it's.
The walkway is here. And those events location.
Okay, so the walkway is outside the fence.
The walkway is outside the fence. So that that fence has to be brought back in because it's no longer pushing the walkway. This is reduced the size of the field. No, it's originally, we had a bump out. We had a walkway coming out, but the fence was going to also. The bump out is still here, you're still. But the walkway was still. So basically, having the walkway go straighter and the fence on the inside of the walkway reduces the size of the field. But in the halfway, so it goes goes all the way from almost grid line. So it's halfway between Blackthorn and the intersection. That starts. Oh, right. So it starts at. Goes up along the sidewalk and then heads north towards East West Highway. And then comes around. Around stops right there. Sir. Is there a construction reason? The fence itself not be put in, in other words, just the putting through the fence and everything. Same irrespective of the rest of the. Correct. Yeah, I have some questions of the swale that's being installed along East West Highway in that right of way, you know, part of that area is fenced. So I guess we need to take a look to see exactly what the final contours of that swale are and how it sort of interacts with where the fence is located, just to make sure that it.
So this has gone on for quite a while. Um, I wonder if we have to hold a work session about this that would have either designed without the bump out or or whatever. I I I'm thought we were somewhere, but we're not. But I want to make sure that there's enough time for everyone to come up with their you know, final thoughts about this and not feel rushed.
The suggestion I would make is that we, I mean, I think I I just wasn't even and I'm I'm probably alone among the five of us in this. I wasn't really even entirely clear why some of the recommendations had changed and what the and like what the history of the recommendations were initially. The the drain I understood since the sinkhole situation and everything. But the other the other recommendations, I just I don't have any context for, and I don't I don't know where we've been and I don't know what the intention is in some of the in some of the other changes. So I I I was prepared to sign off on, you know, a handful of things like the south part of the park, I thought was a good idea tonight, but I I will confess, I don't really understand where this is going, I guess, I.
I was trying to myself off. I think the most valuable work session would be to have one at the site. We've done that before. And and I think actually notwithstanding some differences in views, a fair amount of progress is made, right? And we know that we want the improvements that for for the the swale and all the re re grading on the park. We're not going to have the drainage system. We do want everything to the south. So I think that's and that that's what's needed, I think, in terms of trans moving the trees and everything else.
But it is the other things I'm not clear about.
Exactly. So that's that, I think, could be a subject of a work session at the site, and perhaps that would be helpful to us in understanding the bump out, where it would have been the new plan, where the path would have been the new plan, and also exactly where the fence is. But we're all we're all at the site talking about it, I think.
So the question then, if we're if we're good about the southern part of the park, do we want to build this out, give 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 the direction to the staff and then schedule? I don't know, once that first part, first phase is complete and then schedule, okay, this is where the the so it gives them time to put together the design, have these questions answered. We see the park now that it's been regraded and then say, okay, here's where this fence is. I don't know, if if we press go today for the southern part of the park and then the regrading, when is this project? This first phase done? Okay, so September slash October, we could then have a work session, whoever the new council is, it's a new council. We would have a work session on these last two parts to think through. And that gives enough time to get the additional details about, you know, we don't want the bump out potentially or whatever. Does that help?
I mean, I think it's remobilizing, you know, immediately after we put everything back. It's going to be to the residents who live there. And just, I'm not sure what the timing would think of her, but I think if we're going to build it, we ought to build what we can.
Let me add some thoughts. First of all, they're going to sub out the fence work. Okay, so that's a contractor all by itself. You you said that the the rest of the northern, the sidewalk and all that, you would prefer to have it deferred until you do a pavement. Some pavement. Well, yeah. But at that time, you that's cement. So if we needed to build the sidewalk, that we hire a cement contractor to do that. So that's not an additional total workforce re reboot. It's just elements of it. So I don't see any problem with deferring that until after the southern part gets completed and then we take a closer look at that northern section and what we really want to do.
I think we're leaning towards at the moment, no bump out as well. So I I agree that I'm not sure that I I don't know what will happen come September, October, but I agree that there may not be as many like kind of interruptions for the residents, if you will, or or usage of the of the facility. Okay. Well, thanks for that. We will, we do you have every, do you have the information that you need right now?
I just wanted to be clear, if I could, the takeaway from this is that we're are we asking Jason to design the components of this? These improvements that you've just discussed tonight, mainly the the southern portion?
No, not design, go forward and implement it. So the. So the regrading, um, portion of the project, the southern, uh, uh, pathway, the benches, the picnic table, um, the connection to the crosswalk that exists along Blackthorne. What is not part of this first, I'm going to call it first phase, for lack of a better term, is the northern part of the pathway, because there's some questions about bump out, no bump out. Um, and the fencing. So that will be. That will be a future work session whenever the car, park is complete and that second part is designed in some way that we can understand.
One value about determining the fencing at this future work session is again, the residents felt very strongly, they want the largest possible space for the park. I felt that, that, that basically the design did a good job of doing that. But now there's going to be a swale and we're actually going to be able to see it after it's been regraded. That may give us some better understanding of exactly where the fence could go. So I think we'll just have it be able to make a better decision that can hopefully accommodate the, the interest. And if we do it in September, the fence can be installed before spring of next year, I think.
Yeah, let's hope.
See what's there. Um, the only other question is, I guess landscaping, um, you know, we'll need to plant.
Everything in the southern portion is fine to plant.
Well. Put a landscaping plan together and just implement it, or do you want any review of that by?
Help me out here, wouldn't the landscaping be done next fall anyway? The plantings?
In the, in the fall.
Okay, so if we have our work session, we determine the fence. We'd also be able, that, that, that's what you're looking for, to be able to determine exactly where the plantings go, right? Because you were concerned about.
Yeah, in order to close out our permits, we'll need to get stabilized, select the mulch and have it planted. So it might be.
Do we really want to get involved with planting?
Landscaping.
Or slant, planting landscaping, I.
No, 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 I, I think one of the things I read in the memo, correct me if I'm mistaken, was that you didn't want to do the landscaping because you, you didn't want to do that until, or the plantings, I mean, until you knew exactly where the fence was going to be. Wasn't that your perspective?
Screening plantings, there are also restoration plantings.
Okay, I hadn't separated the two. Okay, I guess we're talking about the screening plantings. And you felt the screening plantings had to be done in coordination with the fencing. So my, my, what I'm suggesting is that if we have the work session in September, we agree on the fence. Would that be in time for you then, for us to agree on the screening plantings and have them done in the fall, later in the fall? Which is probably the timeframe you'd be on anyway.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
The pantry side and then some other ground cover, those sorts of things.
Anything on the southern part, like what we've discussed, I'm, I'm fine. Yeah, like go, go for everything that's the southern part. Okay.
Match what's in the dentist's garden.
Okay, okay.
I was talking about the northern screen.
Yeah, yeah, no, I wasn't sure, but if that was tripping you up on the southern part as well, like just go for it, like do what you need to do. Okay, are we? We're good?
Jason, we're clear, we're good, we're good.
Jason, thank you very much. Appreciate the.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you, bye.
Bye. Oh, well, Bethesda Market Park, a much easier, much easier discussion.
But I did have some, uh, thoughts and I wanted to actually set them out in writing, but I wanted to read through it. I, I think we really are coming to a very critical juncture about the prospect of putting more money into this project. And I wanted to set out some thoughts about it. And I've had a chance to talk to each of you and Irene and Todd have both also been fully engaged in the meetings we've had with the developers. But just to go over a few basics. By way of background, um, there's no doubt the town has already done a lot. Out of the 27.7 million dollar initial budget, there's 20 million dollars or so of public funds. Developers are putting in almost eight, that's separate from the plaza, which is another 12 that the developers are putting in. But of that 20 million, we've currently putting in four and a half million. So it's about 23%. So it's in line with actually our initial resolutions going back to the fall of 2021. What we're now in front of, what's now in front of us is the question of the quality of the park that we can get. And what seems pretty clear is that if we don't put any more money and nobody else does, we can get a decent park, it'll be a lot of green, it'll be a lot of empty spaces. But it will not have some of the features and it probably will have a, two dog runs for large and small dogs. But it will not have the other amenities that we know a lot of residents were very interested in seeing, specifically a stage, water feature and exercise play equipment on lot 10. And then there's another package of improvements that would probably just make the park look a little better, but are relatively minor stuff. The current, and I'll stress the word rough, I capitalized it when I typed this, uh, number for the add-ons is about two and a half, or these additional features that are not in the core price that could be covered by the budget, is about two and a half million dollars. But this could be light, we don't have really solid numbers for the costs of the, these additional amenities. And in any event, we're a long way from completing designs. All of the numbers embed a 10% contingency, but that may not be enough. So, you know, we can understand instinct, well, let's wait and see what happens. But, you know, I think that there are several reasons why I'm encouraging the council to take up this matter now. First, we've lost a year already, you know, when the county council approved the budget in the fall of 2022, November of 2022, we had hoped the site plan could be filed by September of 2023. We'll be lucky if we can get it by September of 2024. And obviously delay just is dangerous for any number of reasons, uh, not the least of which is cost, but also just making sure everyone is committed. In order to get a site plan before the planning board by this fall, the developers need more certainty about what's going to really be in the parks, which relates back to the budget. They need to know whether some of these features can really be in there or not. And also I just think it's a time, I, I don't want to get on a pedestal about this, but I think it's a time for the town to lead and to help galvanize what's going on and how committed we are and believe the residents are to get a really top notch park in this area. And we could dilly-dah, not dilly-dah, we could sit back, try to negotiate and so forth. But I think putting up more money now, if we're inclined to do that, will really carry the extra benefit of helping to push forward the whole project faster. How much money do we have? Well, we have an additional, uh, in the initial budget was 1 million dollars that came from the state. But subsequent to that, we received another half million. So none of that half million has yet been incorporated into costs or, or, you know, matched with any costs on the other side. So we have that half million. We also have 2.3 million dollars of money that we originally received from the ARPA grant from the federal government that we have not used directly. Now, I, we of course, put it through services and gradually going into reserves, but that 2.3 million remains untouched in principle. And, and clearly we have, have the money to, to give this, to a quick perspective on this. Just to take a benchmark, based off of what Todd believes will be our reserve by, at the end of this fiscal year. If you then subtract out the four and a half million we've already appropriated, and you were also to subtract out if we did appropriate the 2.3 million dollars that is, um, in the ARPA budget of money, if you will, we would still have 11.4 million dollars in our unallocated reserve, which is almost as much as we had at the end of 2021. And by way of thinking about this, we, oh, from, from 2013 to FY, FY 13 to FY 19, we had an average of 8 million. We all thought that was incredibly ample. So we, we are still in very good shape, uh, for anything the town might have to deal with, even if we put in, uh, this additional money. So what I wanted to put on the table tonight were first, some principles that I think we should be thinking about if we're going to put in more money. The first that we have to show to residents that we've been disciplined in our approach to this. We've looked at ways to cut costs and in particular, uh, not have to bury, uh, utility wires on 46th street, nor utility wires on, on the backside of lot 10 where the alley is. I don't think residents would feel like those were particularly high value adds, especially if that was going to be instead of being able to find these amenities. And, and, um, I think recommend that we seek, uh, meetings with the planning department quickly to be able to make that point and get their concurrence. Second principle, that we really only want to go through this exercise once. We want to say this is what's going to be required, so that we should be thinking about a solid plan that puts, that, that, that whatever additional money we put in is part of a larger financial plan that actually gives us comfort that no one's going to have to come back a third time. And, uh, within that, I would say that we should not figure on less than, I'll say, three and a half million in total for this plan. Because if currently they're estimating the add-ons at two and a half million, I think another million on top of that may not be enough, but at least that's the ballpark of, you know, what could be required because of additional contingencies and what might be required. Third principle is that contributions are also going to have to come from some other parties. We're not going to do all this by ourselves. That should be clear. And fourth principle is that a charrette needs to be held during our deliberations so that our residents can see the park and what the improvements would be while we're deliberating and debating it. And we can get their comments that are grounded on what these park, this park would really look like. So those are the suggested principles we would apply. And then I think for us to consider, again, not tonight, I'm just sort of setting out kind of the agenda for what would be on our deliberations, is are we supportive of doing more and if so, how much? Uh, secondly, what would be the formula of our participation? Obviously, we could put in the half million, in fact, we're obligated to put in the half million that's from the state. But of any additional money that we'd put in, how much might we put in free and clear? How much would we potentially put in on a matching basis to require other parties to put in money as well? And then there's the question of, well, what should that matching amount be? What's, what's the percentage we would apply? So then there's those issues. And then, uh, I would also say, what are other conditions that are, that we would want to make sure we're clear about? For example, in the past, and I think we ought to reiterate it, that, uh, we are expecting an agreement between parks and town for the, uh, activation and, and, um, uh, the, the, um, collaboration. That's the way the term that Mike Riley's used. And that's important in terms of events, in terms of timing of those events, making sure things aren't too late. I mean, there are things that we're going to want to care about in this park. So I, I think that's just one example of the kind of thing we would make sure is in front of our partners. But there could be other conditions as well, but I'm just saying that's a topic. And then finally, the timeframe for our decision. And, um, there, the, the thought I'd like to suggest is that, you know, we sort of are introducing the idea tonight, something that'll be picked up and put into the recorder. Or, uh, and then also Irene has asked me to draft a, a message for the, uh, forecast. Um, and, and, uh, which is due tomorrow, as I found out. So I, I'm working on it. The, um, uh, that's fine, that's good. Pressure is good. The, um, uh, but also that, um, we would be, you know, pushing, as we actually already have with the Parks Department to get ready for a charrette process in the near future, so that we could make a specific recommendation, potentially in April. Which would then, the charrette would follow that, but that we would be voting sometime in May or June, depending upon when a charrette can be held and we've gotten responses back from the community. But we should be letting our partners know that we don't want to take the vote later than June, because then there's not going to be enough time for that vote to be incorporated into the design plans, which we're hopeful will still be ready by September or October. So hence the pulling this together. So those are my thoughts. And, uh, open conversation.
Thank you, Barney, that's, um, really excellent. And you and Irene have really been, uh, I think, you know, pushing the pedal to the metal to kind of get this done. Um, which, you know, I think is really greatly appreciated. I, you know, wondering what can you share in terms of the, um, feelings of other parties about their vision for the park? And, um, you know, how, how much can we rely on them? To, to really, you know, we're, you know, if, if we're as a town, willing to put more resources up there to make sure that this is a really great park, that we have a sense that the other parties involved in the project also have that feeling.
That's a very good question, thank you. Uh, I think in this regard, I'm, I'm very pleased at what has been a steady evolution in the perspective of the Parks Department. Um, and, and at this point, and Irene and I had a chance to meet with the park director and the deputy park director just last Friday. I think there's very strong enthusiasm for them, by them, for, uh, really to make this a top class park. They really want to see it that way. Uh, by the, they use the term, they make it a singular, but they're including the parks on both parking lots, just to be clear. Okay, but to them, it's one park. Uh, and they, they actually care very much about the park on lot 10. They absolutely see that as essential. So they're not talking about hiving that off as something, you know, that might happen or not. To them, it's, it's, they really want to integrate it. The other thing which, which, uh, the Parks Department, the media figure editor has said is that, uh, she is prepared to go and ask for more money to the county council. So, uh, that's, you know, how much, who knows? Uh, I think that's part of our leadership. If we're putting money on the table, it makes it easier for the Parks Department. That money is, is most likely to come from the PIP program, to be clear. So that's reallocation from elsewhere in, in Bethesda. But I think she understands that, you know, whatever the history and background is, we are where we are. And we want this to be a really top class park. So we do have that strong support. Um, I don't think the county is, uh, in terms of the Department of Transportation is planning to put in more. Uh, but they are responsible for the garage. Um, and we are putting in just over a million dollars to the garage ourselves out of our four and a half million. Uh, but we're not anticipating being responsible for anything more than that. So the 100% of any increment we put in would be for the, for the parks. Uh, for the developers, um, I think, uh, they feel the, they have the obligation to be 100% responsible for the redevelopment and expansion of the farm women's market and re-landscaping around the plaza. That budget had been 12 million dollars. Undoubtedly, it's gone up and they're feeling pressure. Uh, so I don't think we can expect that they're likely to put more money themselves into the capital cost of the park. So basically, I think the prospect of any matching is going to come from, uh, the Parks Department and potentially from private sources. And there is one source of private funding, uh, which is being worked on, which would be a hundred thousand dollars. So it's not immaterial and we hope that there'll be more.
Thank you, Barney, for all of your work on this. It's a labor of love. And then some. And, and, uh, it's definitely going in the right direction in terms of, of the understanding of the importance of building a really good park. But I think that budgets are being squeezed all over the place. Um, so we have to be realistic about what that matching might look like in terms of government sources, you know? Okay, thank you. So it really is dependent upon the, uh, putting together these, these, uh, these budget items, uh, for the, for the charrette process. We're a bit kind of in limbo until we know there's a date. And I think that as a team, we can, we can, um, get ourselves organized rather quickly. But starting with this forecast message, um, for, for April, the April forecast will be very important and we just keep delivering. Uh, maybe we need to, I, I don't know, we have what is a base plan already. I don't know what more we can do between a forecast message and a charrette, um, but.
Well, I guess what we ought to think about is that we could, we could have a specific proposal of what we'd be willing to do.
Yep.
Um, and have that on the table, uh, then have the charrette process. Then we take a vote after we've got the comments. I think the residents to know, okay, what is the council thinking about? What does a park plan look like? That they're both important to have. I also think that if we can step forward with a proposal and people go, oh, okay, they're not, this is what they're thinking about. That will have also, I think, a beneficial impact on that whole charrette. People go into that meeting knowing what could be done. Uh, if, if we, if we don't have, if that proposal's not on the table, I would fear that a lot of the conversation would revert to what you've heard me say before, we want to avoid, which is people saying, oh, they're just. you've heard me say before, we want to avoid, which is people saying, oh, there's just that bear park. We don't know where more money is going to come from. So that's not good. And, oh, I really want that more than that. So I think if we have already put forth our proposal, I think that will help people recognize that we can actually do a lot more than just that base.
I will also say, along with that proposal is what other asks. I think that that will all, meaning you were you were alluding to to an initial list. Because I think some people may come back and be like, you know, what are we getting really for, even though as a town where the buffer parks is already a lot? But I think some people might come back and say, well, what are we doing? But, you know, creating a situation where it's going to be a bunch of concerts or whatever, you know. So I think that will also, that's another good place to to start or continue. Great. Thank you.
Work on some thoughts, perhaps talk to people and come back. I guess our meeting is April 10th. Our next council meeting.
That's right.
Do you want to, I mean, I think we've, we're all in agreement. But do you want to put that on? For Barney to be able to go ahead forward with this whole process that we're talking about?
Well, I I think that we have to be mindful that we're going to need to repeat the message a lot. And there's a lot of things in flux still on the other end.
Yeah. Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're all okay with what he's proposing as a path forward.
Of course, yeah. If you all
I think that's a good, yeah. I'm all in favor.
So yes, please let you all think you're a good shaking head. Okay. Thank you. All right, quick on Purple Line. Barney and I had a really good meeting last Tuesday. I don't remember. The time flew. And with Maricela Cordova, who is the Special Projects Director for the Montgomery County Department of Transportation. So specifically working this, these issues around Purple Line. And we invited her for an onsite meeting to go through the first two backyards that are on Elm Street, so that, you know, aside from photos, she can see it for herself. I did ask her the question, is there anyone else along the line? That, you know, the the whole 32 miles or whatever it is, it's experiencing these kinds of, you know, intrusiveness. And she said, no, that that we, you know, this, this was definitely a compelling situation. So she has yet to get back to us, but there's already been conversations with the contractor who indicates the, during the presentation that we had with the community and where we, you know, kind of said, is there something that can be done with a transparent barrier to create a little bit more of a an effect that that people couldn't look into people's backyards? That they're looking, that A, it's a good time to make those changes and and make those orders, right? And 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 B, as long as it does not result in a delay of delivery. There can't be any more delays. It's very, very clear. But they're waiting on cost estimates. So we're waiting to hear back about that information to to understand. But very much there was no, you know, hemming or hawing, very, very very much understood the situation. So we are gonna wait and see what happens there. Coaklin Run, I understand, is running potentially again. Just because we had a rainy winter, didn't really have much cold. So that's it around the purple. Yeah, yeah. Ran the hose over. There you go. There you go. There you go. MML legislative updates. I just got something myself about the housing bill. So I don't know if you did.
Well, I mean, I don't really have anything, you know, I don't have any tea, as the kids say. Last week, we did not meet, and this week was just a review of the bills that, you know, either made it into the crossover. So the crossover is when, you know, a bill is introduced in one house and then it's in the House, and then it's sort of introduced into the Senate or vice versa. And of course, the housing bills, the one housing bill that we have been tracking failed crossover. But as it turns out, all of the housing bills failed crossover, even though, you know, two of them were widely supported without amendments. And that does not necessarily mean that they're not going to go through. There's other processes for those to continue. So that's, that's what I know from today.
So I did reach out to Delegate Corman, who is the Chair of the Environment Transportation Committee, or is the Transportation and Environment House Committee. And his Chief of Staff got back to me saying that there was going to be a, so so keep in mind that the House hearing took place for this bill on February the 20th. And there was going to be a subcommittee meeting today, land use and zoning subcommittee meeting. I tuned in, waited for an hour. That meeting did not happen. So I don't know if it was just that delayed or whatever. I gave up. What I understand from another source is that the Transportation, Environment and Transportation Committee is considering not only to reduce the radius from one mile to a half a mile, but they want to remove entirely the nonprofit land from this, because remember, there were different ways that that you could access this affordable housing. Move the nonprofit land out of it and land within transit areas that are currently zoned for single-family homes. So meaning our town. It would eliminate the for for our town completely. So I have no, this is proposal amendments on the House side. I have no idea what's going on on the Senate side, and I only heard this from a separate source, so I have no clue. No idea what what's left after you cut all that up. Have no idea. Nonetheless, it'll be an interest from now until April 8th. April 8th is the last day. So that's all that I know about this bill. The testimony never reflected, I listened, I listened. Yeah, I don't know. The testimony did not reflect any of that. There were a lot of people in favor of this. They had questions. They had amendments. But it's, this is, this is odd, kind of an odd thing. So I don't know what's happening. Yeah, we'll see. Stay tuned. The last item is this Legislative Aid Consultant, which I've sent out to to each of you via kind of just a discussion type of thing. Joy and I have had various discussions about this. Not only in terms of state legislative ignorance on my part to understand how this goes. I know how a bill becomes a law, but I don't understand the 90 days and what happens and how different bills are prioritized. So there's 2,300 bills in front of the state legislature, by far the biggest. They'll never expand the 90-day window. It is what it is. But there's this habit of, you know, you introduce something and it takes a few years until it actually passes because so much is coming through. And, you know, we we delved into this housing bill. We really learned about it. We testified about it. And I don't know if that was impactful in any way, right? The state, the same goes with the county. There's a ton of ideas floating around, a lot of different either ZTAs or other bills that may or may not impact the town. And it's extremely hard to keep track of it in an in an educated way that allows us, A, to understand the true impacts to the town, and B, to effectively communicate all of this to our residents. So the the idea proposed was to get a legislative aid. And and initially, it could start out as as a consultant. If there are other municipalities, I've talked just with a couple of other municipalities about the idea. Very high-level type of conversation and and expressing interest in, yes, we we would, we would chip in kind of a thing for for this type of service. So I wanted to just put this out all, you know, for for consideration. I've talked with Todd about this. There's been an identification of a couple of resources that good conversations to start to see if that would be something that would be of interest. We could find out more about about the efficacy and qualifications and things like that. But just throwing it out there right now, is this something that is too much? Just we're a small, little town of, you know, 2,900 people. Do we need this? Or is this something that is of interest to explore further? So.
Are you talking about a lobbyist?
Or effectively, could be a lobbyist, could be, but really to to to
Annapolis translator.
Annapolis translator, but even Rockville translator.
I I don't, I I guess my concern, I don't, I certainly don't want to hire lobbyists. But the the thing that I would like to see is that there's a myriad of these bills that are floating around, and I would like somebody to to be to be on the lookout for any of the things that that legislatures, either the county or the state, are are considering that might impact us. So that's, that's more of a person to to keep track of the legislation going through, you know, going through these places and seeing which would be of interest to us and which are ripe for us to take, you know, to actually take a stand on. And and at what point, not to lobby for us, we can, we can lobby for ourselves. But but to be be aware of things that might impact us. And as as when you first brought up the idea, I I immediately thought of Ron Bolt. I mean, he has to be, he he should have an interest in this as well, a big interest. And there ought to be some way, you know, when we, if we figure out we want to do it, to either tie with him or, you know, other communities to get, so we don't have to foot the entire bill for somebody looking at legislation and seeing whether it matters to us. Because I I I think we do have the horsepower. Once we identify something that we, that's of interest to us to weigh in on, we've just done it.
But it's a lot to put on a town council member. I don't know how sustainable this is, because it it's it's very complicated to to dig through. It requires very strong relationships to understand, is this something that's just someone is is checking a box? Or is this something that we need to really dig in and 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 start, you know? It's, it's tough.
I would, I would extend the the kind of literature search thing to somebody that would actually be able to
Yeah.
to hone in for us, the things that we ought to really be, you know, focused on and and
It's supposed to be MML that does this. And and it's just not a
But they're too broad.
It's just the the, you could speak to this much better, Joy, than I. But the the focus seems to be for MML to to enable municipalities to 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 find revenue generating opportunities for themselves. They're not like the town Chevy Chase. I mean, there's 157 municipalities, and there are some that are really, really in a different financial position than we are. And so there, the MML's kind of mission is more about like, how how can you become more self-sustaining? Which makes a lot of sense, right? But it's, it's not about truly this legislative, like, you know, they look at 100 bills out of the 2,300. I don't know how many there, you know.
Yeah, it is. It's really quite a lot. And and again, you know, they're representing, you know, 150 municipalities who all have different, you know, they're big municipalities, which I will not name, and little ones like ours. You know, so we have vastly different sets of interests and and issues. We've got different constituencies. I think, you know, given the, I mean, every state legislature legislative process is somewhat opaque. There's no, there's hardly any attention paid to this because there's no more media covering local government. And so, you know, I find that it would be valuable to us to have someone who's tracking, well, what are these legislators? How does this work in Annapolis? And as you said, Irene, is this somebody checking a box? Or is this something that we really need to be focused on? And if so, what can we do to prepare ourselves for? We have, we certainly have the budget for this. If we had a, you know, a larger staff or, you know, given the model that we now use, where we rely a lot on consultants, it doesn't seem to me beyond the realm of possibility to engage a consultant to also provide this service for us. You know, if we had a larger staff, this would probably be a function that a staff person would do. So.
A a well-equipped consultant would use probably numerous of the electronic means that are available now to do this stuff. I mean, there is very sophisticated software that tracks state bills as they, I know it because we use it at work all the time, and we can set all kinds of alerts and everything so that when things come up on topics that you're interested in, you know about them right away. And if they move from some committee to committee, or there's a hearing set or whatever, you know, right away. It is really helpful to have a human also. Look at, look at this and figure out, you know, what's what's actually relevant and what's not. There, there should be something similar for county government. I think increasingly across the country, there are electronic services that gather data on that. But perhaps a law firm, perhaps Ron, someone like that, somebody else, you know, I think we should start asking there, there must be people in Maryland who have the combination of the subscriptions to the data services and the knowledge to give me filter to do this.
We get the notifications of everything that's happening from the county, like whatever sort of new, new bill that's been introduced by a county council member, right? But honestly, by the time it gets introduced
Automated either.
Well, as as automated as putting together whatever the press releases are and 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 stuff like that. I'm, I'm, and but I think we all know that by the time it gets to the introduction slash press release point, decisions have been made.
Well, at that point, then you are talking about a lobbyist. Because then, truly, because then you are talking about someone who is in such close contact with the county commissioners, with the with the council members' offices, that they know what's going to happen before it becomes public. That's a lobbyist. There's no way around that. I don't know if we need that.
I mean, I I get, you know, subscribed to the county stuff. I can't keep up with going through the press releases.
You're right.
Keep up with going through the things that they, you know, the bills they, I just can't, I physically can't.
Yeah.
None of this singly has the time to do it. So we need, we we need somebody to be able to to understand what's going on so we can react to it. I don't, you don't need a lobbyist in the legislature's.
Irene. The, what about the Montgomery chapter of the of the?
Well, you know, again, at a certain point, there's, you know, I I could spend a full-time, I could spend full-time tracking MML and then going to the MML chapter meetings. I go to a legislative committee meeting. I don't go to any of the in-person meetings, although I'm invited. And there are in-person MML meetings. So, you know, I think if this is a worthwhile activity, we could just pay somebody to do that on a part-time basis.
It ends up falling, depending on the MML-type meeting, for other municipalities, either staff members go. I I hardly ever go bump into another elected person when I've gone to different meetings. But it is, it is a time, like, it's a lot of time. It's a lot of time. I'm thrilled that we got more involved with MML this year than we have in the past. But it's exposed all these other potential opportunities as well as challenges for town council members. So.
This is another way of saying no good deed goes unpunished. You you and Joy have done so much to gauge where where previous councils and previous mayors just sort of pushed all this to the side. They said, life's too short. You guys have gotten engaged. So thank you very much. I I the thought behind my asking about the the chapter was whether there would at least be some number of municipalities that would also feel the same and could join us in defraying this cost. Now, that's why Ron Bolt's office would make so much good sense, because he represents a bunch of municipalities, but he has no interest.
He has no interest.
So but it would be a matter of saying, and that's why I was wondering whether the the chapter would potentially be interested, if 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 other towns feel somewhat besieged as we do, they'd say, yes, would be good to have somebody whom we collectively hire, who would just keep us all notified. And then what each municipality And then what each municipality did with the information is up to them. But at least that person would be.
I think it'll be easy to get others on board, but I think it's up to us to do the lead work.
Yeah.
Todd, you were saying, you were going to say something.
Yeah, the, actually, the reason I was calling you this afternoon, Irene, was to talk to you about this issue. I, I, I think that listening, after listening to the conversation, you know, if you and I want to have a conversation with Ron about his ability to do this or to add this functionality, I know that he didn't want to bring another staff person on board necessarily to oversee or manage. But it doesn't necessarily mean that he can't do it himself if we charge him with that duty. And we have the supplemental ability for backup and attendance at MML Legislative Committee meetings with John Lloyd, who's in our staff now. And so I'm wondering if that might be sufficient at this point for our needs. Obviously, if there are issues that are identified that we want to engage in, we could hire a lobbyist or other type of consultant to delve deeper into legislation that we're interested in. But I'm wondering if now, if perhaps the interim solution is to have a discussion with Ron and John to see if they can fulfill this need 90% of what, you know, what we're looking for, which is trapped.
It's worth exploring. I'm not 100% sure, but it, it's, it's worth exploring and having.
When you, you just hit upon something that, that I think is important. What, we need to be circumspect about what we're interested in. And we only have, we're not interested in everything these county, county governor or the state government's doing. We're interested in stuff that affects the town, our zoning. You know, being the one that we're primarily interested in right now. But, you know, we're, we're not talking about a lot of topics
That's true.
that, that, that are going to need to be researched continually in terms of, of the legislative process. So I think maybe Ron would, he certainly has been informative in, in the things that he's been involved with in terms of their progress through various county legislation for sure. So maybe he would be willing to, to add that as a functionality. But as long as we can describe to him what it is we're interested in.
Yep. Okay. So I, I can work with Todd on that and then report back at a future time and, and see where it goes.
I think he might feel, I, I, I welcome that approach. But I can imagine he might say, wait a minute, I, I'm not going to be the person who can individ, you know, figure out myself out of 2,300 bills, which one?
Let's see what he says.
Or even, yeah, communicate accordingly. Yeah.
Right. I think it's more of the prospect.
Right. And, and they may, there may be hybrids of some sort with him plus some other service that could also be reached and made, give ideas about that.
Great. That was the last topic. But was, is there anything else anyone wanted to cover this evening before we adjourn? All right. Well, thank you, everyone. We are good.
Good night.